...more days are you envisioning because with the historical unemployment rate, you're absolutely correct. And this is a potential retention tool that we could utilize.
Correct.
And that's what we need to do is try to retain our employees down.
You know, because I have some people that have, you know, three, four weeks vacation and they're current job. And they've been there for a long time. So, you know, that's a bucket we get into. So, I just want to have somebody to navigate that.
Further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion? And one extension. Motion carries. Item 10, Curriculum and Standards Committee meeting report from September 2018.
Great. Good evening, everybody. The report is included in your packet. We met on September 24th. We did some updating on our passcode screener. Our ESA plan was finally approved, so that's a great thing. Our full ESA plan that we had to produce as a comprehensive plan of how we're educating all students was approved. Therefore, we can make claims now on our title dollars and our federal funding. And we also talked about our focus on October 26th, which Brady also highlighted, is really focusing on our curriculum mapping and auditing or checking through those curriculum maps. And last but not least, we talked a little bit about academic and career planning and youth apprenticeships and the opportunities that are continuing to be woven into our sixth through 12th graders' experiences at the school. So, if there are any questions or things you have on your mind about the report, certainly let me know.
Thank you. I do have a question that falls into this arena. I am just wondering if you have been in contact with Norah Central Technical College at all about their manufacturing mobile center that they now have on wheels? This is in high demand.
I know, yeah, I know of it. Nate, I don't know when you were up there, Nate and I both go to lots of meetings at NCC. And they made it very, they, we took a tour of it. It's very cool. They're going to be contacting districts to kind of be on the road, the rodeo show.
Just make it show around.
Yeah, it's great.
I talked to them as well, and it is, I would liken it to when they first had the space shuttle. Remember that? It was like, that's what it is right now.
It is. It is very cool.
It's the biggest ticket in town.
It is. So, thank you for mentioning that because it is a really neat opportunity. And at our next meeting in November, just to address Kevin's great question, we will be going through a full presentation. I have it ready of all the outcome scores because these standardized test scores that embargo lifted just late October here. And I'll, I'll be presenting that at Curriculum and Standards and then to the full board. And the public release of the report card, I did ask actually of board members because that was a little bit query. I asked CISA 9 and Al if state report card scores, because you are public, could be released to board members ahead of the November 13 embargo. And no, the answer was no. It can only be shared with school staff for education purposes, and it can be shared after that time. So, it's forthcoming. We know what they are. But just an update, November, we should know more.
Thank you.
Item 11, Building Committee Meeting Report. Since we didn't have one, Steve, do you want to make this one up?
Sure. In your packet, I got some information, of course. I just want to start with our energy efficiency projects. We are definitely finishing up some items from summer. We're waiting for some more control work to come in place. We're waiting for some product. It's just, we're just waiting. It's a long lead time items. But actually, one team in this week installed it into the elementary school. So, we have control and continuity there. We're waiting for the high school unit to come in. So, we're going to button those things up. And that basically relates to all the HVAC equipment that was installed throughout the building. So, that's basically kind of winding down, and we'll get everything online here by the end of the month. So, that was a big project through the summer. As I said, we're shutting that down for conversion. The big thing really is for tomorrow, science room addition. Open house tomorrow between 6:00 and 8:00. So, come on out, come check out the facility. And not just that area, we have a lot of areas we remodeled with that section of work. So, there's rooms that'll be able to be walked through. I think it's, it turned out really, really nice. I think you'll be very impressed with it. I think it gives the building a lot better flow and definitely more space, and everybody can use more space. So, come on out at 6:00 to 8:00 and take a look at what we have. We'd love to give you the tour of that.
Can I make a comment about that?
Sure.
Do we have any kind of media or any, are we doing any kind of publicity with this addition? And the only reason I ask is because, you know, sometimes you're trying to look to increase your number of students. I mean, is this a way for
Murphy?
Some of the people in the Wausau district to see, okay, Moleskine is a smaller school, like, hey, look at, you know, they, you know, they're making expansion. You know, I mean, I'm just trying to think of something to make our school look better because in the media, they only hear about the negative stuff.
Sure.
Yeah, I'll, I'll contact them to come tomorrow. I will tell you, I contact, contact them a lot. A lot of times, they just won't show up if it's, if it's something positive.
Other event that's going to force that one.
Yeah, true.
Well, you know, I will tell you, I had a newer person come in and saw me and their daughter is actually going to Auburndale, and she's opening, coming here because of the science.
Yeah.
In this case, I think Brady is right. The most of the reporters are probably going to be heading to the airport.
Oh, yes, I forgot about that.
But honestly, nobody
Well, let's do our own thing.
Nobody from the White House checked.
That's a bad idea because you can put that on, who might have some order.
I gotta post one over there. I can bring them over.
Steve, with this open house or Nate, and is it going to be like you do it yourself or you're going to be guiding him or?
Yeah, it'll be an open house. Brady's been working on.
So, I have a presentation that's going to go on the TV hallway, and it'll show progress through the summer of all the pictures of that. And then we've got a map that I, I just threw all of the starred, kind of like what you have, a walking tour of like, know all the spots to stop. So, I started the maps of the rooms that were remodeled in the school so people can know where.
And so, you can go on your own terms and your
It will be around here. It will be safe in there too, but just for when Trump tells people to come over here, and we have 500 people to show up, we want to do that.
Right, right, okay. Diane, a question with you. If Steve is done, I'm not sure, but do we have to, the motion for the minutes, to approve the minutes in that on our committee? I have to, you know, approve all the minutes on my
It must be included with this minutes right here, so he would actually approve the minutes of this meeting.
Okay.
We're going to tie that.
Yep, okay. And Steve, were you done with your report?
So, basically, the, you know, the science is the big things tomorrow. So, come on out. But along with that, in this handle, you'll see a lot of reused chemistry that we taken out of the old science room. So, that's been actually moved to like a break room. We took it to the elementary school, middle school's been sprinkled around the buildings. So, you know, we wasted very little, and that's actually been a nice addition for us. And then I would say the other thing regarding the science wing addition is Steve commotion, really, his metal shop area helped promote a lot because, you know, when we were going through the tours, I'm tight, his classrooms inside that work area, which is actually, you know, really a hazard if you want to look at that. So, now he has the adjacent room next to him, which is makes for a very good classroom work for him. Kids can work in there. But also, if you look at the shop, we arranged some of that. He has a lot more workable floor space to be on, which is a good thing. So.
There's a lot of room for deer to run through.
Yeah.
We had a deer running through in class yesterday. I have a video if you want to see the video after.
Better than the video, your associate principal, the letter that he wrote this fall that took place.
Paul wrote that.
That has a chance of going viral. That was one of the best descriptions of what happened that I've ever read.
But John made a good, what we'll do is the minutes that were not approved tonight will carry over.
Okay.
Amy, can you just bring the minutes back next month at each of the
For the committees?
Yep.
We'll approve, there's two sets of minutes at that next meeting.
Okay.
Okay, and then Steve, the new padding and final bleachers.
Yes, can you walk into the, walk into our gym? For all the events are moving inside now. We have some new padding things on the wall. Kind of finish that off. It looks really nice. So, I think it, it's a good representation when people walk in our facilities. Hi, we're here and look what we have. It looks nice. So, I appreciate Nate pushing that through. It goes well.
Great, thank you.
Item 12, Personnel Committee Meeting Report.
Let me start talking about the grant application specialist, and I'm going to involve Brent and Brady in this report. But again, as we saw this being on the agenda item, we spent, I think, two different committee meetings talking about whether or not it's really to our advantage to have a grant specialist position created. I think that was a question that was out there. And quite honestly, for a variety of reasons, I think we wanted to share with the board. First of all, the amount of grant writing that's already done, and I think Brady can share a little bit of this because he's involved in a lot of it. And then in terms of working with CISA 9, we certainly have options there. We don't have to be a member of that consortium. If there's ever a grant that we want to take advantage of, we can do this as an individual member. But again, someone new. Brady, you shared with us all the things you're currently doing. Perhaps that's something for it to be aware of. And then Brent, you could address CISA 9.
So, one of the, the big pieces to this, the proposal that's there is from CISA 9. CISA 9 has a grant specialist on staff. We use her services already. So, we partner in some grants. We have no choice but to partner with them. So, the state teach grant's a good example. I apply for it individually, but I'm not allowed to act as the fiscal agent for it. You need to have a cooperative service agency operate that. So, CISA 9 runs that and is our agent for that. And then in cases like this, just like she included in the proposal here, there is a fee, obviously, to built in for her services as, as there should be. The, the part that I would just throw out to make sure that everybody's on the same page on is, in cases like the teach grant I'll use as the example, you're not allowed to take money from the, the grants. So, in their proposal, she's got, you know, 4%, 5%, 6% of the successful grant. You're not allowed to take that out of the grant. So, in that case, I, I'm paying for that out of my budget. I have no choice but to, to get the money. But ultimately, we're paying her services out of our school budget in some of these cases anyways. So, in the conversations we've had, it, it is a phenomenal service. My concern with it is ultimately, in cases like special ed or technology where a lot of these grants are in, our involvement with these people, when I've got grants with Ann, I'm on the phone with her constantly over trying to, to set her up for success to do it. So, it's difficult to say that a grant specialist would have the expertise in those areas. The other part that I guess I'll throw a little caution on is, there are many grants that we don't apply for because of the involvement that is required out of them. I'll use a perfect example. This organization right here, it's like I wore this on purpose. So, WTI, we've gotten a lot of money from them. They've got a grant going where it looks great on paper, but the involvement it would take of what I would need to do with Katie's staff or Nate's staff, you know, they have requirements built in. So, they'll give us $15,000 for new smart boards, but I have to have 10 days of professional development with four teachers. Why, I can't go to Katie and say, and I, I'll ask them, but ultimately, I'm taking 40 days of teacher time out of their day. So, there are some grants on the table that we just simply do not go for because I don't feel it fits into what our vision and what our mission is going forward on. So, I guess those, those would be just a couple of points to, to bring up to you.
I think the one piece here though is that having an appreciation for what grants are available from the district was, I'll call it an opportunity for us. We heard about them, then we go after them. Is there a better way of getting our arms around that? You know, that would be something that was at least discussed for this role. If we can accommodate our needs by not having a person drive it, I'm, I'm totally okay with that. But I just don't want to see opportunities go by of grants that we aren't seeking that potentially would be a fit for us. Just don't want to see it go by.
Kevin, normally, the CISA, Brent, go ahead.
I'll let you go, Dan.
That CISA 9 is usually, there are flyers all the time saying this grant, this grant, this grant. One of the challenges we talked about in our meeting is that demographics of most of them often preclude even having an opportunity because we don't have some of the, let's say, title numbers and the economically disadvantaged numbers that allow us to compete like some of the bigger districts. Brent, you've been obviously a part of this for a long time.
Yeah, and I was going to say to you, Kevin, just today, it's ironic. I mean, I didn't stage it like Brady with the shirt, but I, I did have two emails from Ann today, seriously. That's the grant writer at CISA with two different grant opportunities that he sent out to all the administrators to let them know about. And one of the things that Ann always says to me is she says, you can't, one grant, she said, she says, you got to have projects in your mind and then see if the grant fits. Because she said trying to make something up to go with a grant is the hardest part. And you've got to have a huge commitment because one of the things Brady said is exactly right. Ann would tell you if she was sitting here is, you know, you have to have a rah rah, you know, excitement towards a grant. And, and I said, you know, when you look about, look at her with both the safety grants, which I wrote by myself, she was like my side consultant. I never called the DOJ. So, she'll help us on stuff when I don't.
She's a tremendous resource.
You don't have to even pay. It's just part of your CISA service, which is really nice for me, you know, when I've used her help in, in the past, when we did have topics that administrators liked, you know, she's helped us in the past with issues with any type of grant.
So, does CISA 9, do they throw out grants that are just for the state or potential federal grants as well? I mean, I guess.
Two, she had one today, I think, was federal and one was state.
Okay. So, do you specifically write then for technology grants? And then who, who covers other things or is it just found out?
Traditionally, the way, the way that it's always been done is when we have our, our admin team meetings, when grants come up, it comes to the table of, you know, who makes the most sense. Obviously, if it's a technology related grant, if it requires building involvement, that's where, you know, like I, this WTI went last year, I made the decision to go to the elementary school for the boards because they have the oldest boards there. So, I worked with Katie on that grant. But, you know, it's, it's honestly just whoever it makes the most sense for. The grants are so specific in nature. That's what makes them, I mean, you really have to have projects in mind ahead of time. Because we've tried it the other way. We tried one a couple of years ago of like, oh, there's so much money out there, and, and it's so difficult to, to do the reverse of that of, you know, trying to go after stuff that isn't necessarily a need. Because the other piece to it is what we're finding more and more in grants is, a lot of them are matching grants. A lot of them are 70-30, 50-50. So, ultimately, yes, it's great, but it's still new money that we need to, you know, come up with on the front end of things, you know. So, there's days of saying, you know, 100% coverage on stuff. It's just not, not that way right now.
You guys are comfortable with what you're doing?
I feel very comfortable with, with what we're doing. And just to highlight again what Brent said, she is such a good resource already as a CISA consultant for us. You know, we have conversations with her all the time about, about grant ideas, so.
And again, you have a, I think it's called B. I might be missing one. The interviews for the school nurse, I think we're proud to say that we did find a school nurse. Brent, you might talk a little bit about that. I know you sent an email out to everybody or Julie, you want to talk about that?
Julie actually was involved in the hiring, but where we're at is we have an offer extended to a school nurse. And today, she went in for her TV and drug testing. So, then she's got to complete the pre-employment process before we officially have a hired nurse. I would anticipate she will complete it, but you always have to go through that step completely. So.
And we have two other situations, the long-term position for a middle school teacher assistant. We're not quite sure when that employee is going to be leaving yet, but it's a family medical leave act situation. And then we also posted a position for a substitute reading teacher. That person is leaving on December 10th. We expect that around February 1st. Also due to a medical, so those are the ones that I'm aware of unless our principals have. Is Julie something else?
So, we're into 12C.
12C, we're looking at, let me
Approval of an additional temporary elementary special education.
Again, I think in your closure, Darlene put this together. We have two situations, one at the elementary school, and when we get down to the next item, like a high school. These are situations where the IAP is determining its services need, if needed. It's five days a week. It's a full-time position. It's the entire school year. And so, we're recommending that we hire a temporary special education assistant. The dollar amounts are listed below. I'm not quite sure how the motions go in this district, but the position is listed there, a salary with benefits of 25, $25,041.
So, I would need a motion. Okay, we have a motion by Mark. Is there a second? And a second by Jess. Further discussion? All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. And then item D just touched on it briefly, the approval of the additional temporary high school special education assistant for the 18, 19 school year, and that amount was 24, 846 and 78 cents.
Again, we're asking for a temporary position. It could continue, but if the IAP suddenly comes out and that is no longer needed, obviously, we would address that situation. But at this point, we don't know that. So, that individual could be here for the entire year.
We have a motion by Corey and a second by Mark. Further discussion? Not all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Item 12E, discussion of possible decision, approval of additional resignations for temporary hires.
Where I run to report to the board this evening?
So, moving on, item F, is there an update on new extra particular hires?
Once again, there are none to report before this evening.
Okay, and then item G is future agenda items you did not meet, but I don't know if the committee wants to bring anything forward? Okay. All right, we're moving on to the finance committee meeting report. Brad? Go to her. Do you mind, Brent?
No, I, I can go. I didn't know if Mike wanted to say a word before I started yelling.
Brent, I'll let you open with this.
All righty. The, the budget, basically, I don't know if you got a chance to read it. I mean, the highlights would be, we grew in student enrollment this year, which was good. Number two was, you have more kids coming into the school district than leaving through open enrollment. First time since 2003. Good. I put in the safety grant, the additional 109,000 we got, adjusted some salaries and benefits, added to the three special education temporary aides. On your oddities, the DPI decided that you can't have a fund 44. You have to have a fund 49 account. So, when you see me talking, if I say fund 44 and 49 and get mixed up, it's always been 44, but now it's going to be 49 fund, and that's your construction fund. That's something that was interesting. Need things on taxes. I mean, it's not good taxes are going up, but when you're doing a science addition, or I mean, excuse me, energy efficiency project, we knew that taxes would go up. The taxes are going up. But fortunately, the increase of a half million dollars in taxes is really amounting to three cents on the mill rate, which is really good. But we had some nice growth in property values, 4.7%. So, when you look at it for implementing that project and increasing our tax rate, I'd say this is all really good news because you remember what we were figuring is probably around 70 cents a mill rate increase. So, you know, that's what Ellers put out there. So, really, when you look at it, it all came out pretty good. The budget, I think, came out nicely. So. What?
That does bring up a lot of operational costs, you know, until after this year with the additions and improvements. It's kind of a wild card really.
Yeah, it's going to be interesting. Actually, it's funny, John's smiling at me. He says, why do you put in your heating what you put in? And I said, I always have plenty in there because I don't want to be the business manager that's in the newspaper. And you'll hear him say, oh, the heating budget's blown. And to me, that's always one of the ridiculous things. So, my aim isn't to be ridiculous, but I, I certainly don't want you guys ever to be in the paper worrying about whether the business manager has your heating covered because I do.
Do we have to turn this over?
What'd you say? Well, this is going to turn into a pickaxe. But yeah, I said the budget turned out real nice, I think. And I said, I was real happy. It really went well. And I said to John, and I said to the administrators, this next year, we'll have to look at ways to do new things and try to save money. You know, next year's a new, uh, new budget for the state. So, how funding will look for the following year, it will always be a question every couple of years. But I said, the beauty of it is you have a strong financial statement, confident we can navigate whatever's thrown at us. Like the idea that the enrollment's going up and we're getting more kids in, I think it's a happy ending of the story. And I'd ask you approve the budget and approve the tax funding for the school district.
So, we have a motion by Mike and a second by Jess to approve the final budget letting tax rate for 18, 19 school year. Is that a roll call vote? Okay, roll call vote, please.
Baum, yes? Hewes?
Yes.
Gorman?
Yes.
Kaiser?
Yes.
Mantle?
Yes.
Theo?
Yes.
Tom Chek?
Yes.
Zebra?
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Okay, item B is a possible discussion and decision on land rent at Jinson. Mr. Hile's offering $500 versus $80 per year on, per acre. I did some math, and we promote it at a four-year term, it'd be $80,000. And if we do a four-year term at $80,000, it's $12,800. I'm going to give you some of my personal opinion. I, I don't feel we should enter into a Jinson contract with Mr. Hile. I kind of was trying to, and I had Brent, see if we could swap land with him. And Mr. Hile apparently doesn't want to. So, we'll play the wait and see game. Would you like to see?
This is discussion.
Yeah, that's discussed.
What did you mean by a land swap?
Well, along Greens Lane Road, I thought, on the other side of the fire department.
Sandy Lane property, back 40 on Sandy Lane, Corry, for land south of the fire department that Joe owns.
Yeah. And I thought we could come over maybe a little more land.
And what's the reason to not do it? To not earn money on that land? We have no plans for it?
Well, it's only $68,000 difference. And we can always do it anytime, enter and put.
What about enter, Mike, when we, last month, we kind of entertained the fact of maybe looking at doing like a couple acres?
The revenue opportunity here.
And then coming back in a couple of years and
Yeah, but once you spend your revenue, you get it no more.
I lost all your logic, Mike.
Do you come in? Well, if we rent this land on at Jinson, in the Jinson property, you're going to get this money this year. But next year, what are you going to do next year?
He's going to farm it for the regular crop. That's why it has two different prices.
Right.
And the Jinson crop isn't there for how long?
It'll be four years.
Four years.
So, if we do a couple acres, that's going to tie that property up for a long time.
He had 10 years in for the term, but he would work with you depending on how much you wanted to put in shank. But I mean, he needs an extended period of time. It's not a one-year deal.
That's a lot more information. So, what you're opposed to, Mike, is paying the land up in the Jinson for the four years, I hear, four years?
Four or five years, whatever.
You're, you're, you're opposed to tying it up for five years with the Jinson contract. That's what you're opposed to. But this, this district has no this district has no stomach for developing anything anymore.
Right. Well, what, what the original was is, I don't, if I believe correctly, we did want to tie it up for 10 years. Right? So, what we were thinking about is going, we could do it for three years. We could do it four takes for sure.
Four would be what you want to say is you could do a portion of the land, but he isn't going to be able to do 48 in four years.
Right, 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 Brent. So, that's what we have to decide.
You're renting the land for whatever Jinson cycle it is, and then after that, do you come back? Because once he goes Jinson out, then all he can do is regular crop. So, if he doesn't want, if he doesn't want to go for 10, if he doesn't want to go for five years, I guess, my understanding is Jinson industry, they need all the fresh Jinson land they can get. So, why should I take it? We're certainly not going to do anything with that in the next four or five years.
I don't support that. The Jinson has just gone crazy. And right now, every corner of people just being turned over for it. But it's the revenue right now that it brings that it's yielding ultimate dollar and has a long time. So, I, I see this as a revenue opportunity too. There's no plan right now for use of that land. So, right now, I see it as an opportunity for us to gain back to provide other services for us.
Do you want, you know, to, you know, if, if five years is the number that you guys are comfortable with, do you want me to go back to Joe and say, well, what would you be able to propose if we had a five-year commitment? Because it's going to depend on how many acres he can do at one time. You know, he was talking, maybe doing different quantities. He's real flexible, and I'm not real positive what his muster is. You say, I got 10 years, eight years, you know, what type of proposal to ask him to come back? Because he's going to know 'Cause he's gonna know what he can plant and what cycle, so I don't really
If you wanna negotiate with someone, he can't be flexible, he's, he's trying to string out the use of the land, he's trying to tie up the land. That's what he's trying to do. That's that, Mr. Hile, he's a smart man, he knows what he's doing. But if you wanna, if you wanna reap some, some money off of that property, say, hey, we'll go for five years, you wanna plant the whole thing at Jinson, great.
Well, I can certainly say that, 'cause basically, whatever you guys would like, and he can say, yea, your name, just like with the land swap.
Demand is at an ultimate high, and it's going that way.
And he would tell, or at least this is the last thing he told me when we talked, he says he thinks it's at a peak and it's going down. That's what's his professional opinion, which would bode well for Corey's statement.
Since Jinson is growing, and they're the ones that own it all.
Well, he's Chinese competition, that is what he's
Otherwise, if you were to stay, would you be able to eat more from somebody else?
Probably not.
I don't know what, I mean, I don't know what it costs.
I know my friends are getting paid $500 an acre for Jinson land and alder. I think, Mike, you've said that's not an unusual number for Jinson.
No, it is not. It goes all different directions.
Just talk to him about a five year, see what he says after five years, come back.
Okay, you better make a motion, Corey.
Just table it.
I'll second.
Motion the second.
How do you make a motion?
So, oh, make, oh, why are they getting motion to table it?
Yes.
Oh, I don't, I don't even need to do that. We're discussing.
Can I, can I, can I assess for what, you can come back with a five-year idea? I can handle that mission.
Moving on, discussion and possible decision, the approval of the firewall purchase.
This is a budget I opened for the 18, 19 year of the technology budget. Five-second synopsis is the firewall is exactly as the name implies, it is the frontline of defense. So the internet comes in through this, it's a physical appliance, and this is what keeps anything malicious out of your network. So when you hear the big crazy stuff happening around the world of Russians, that's what's happening.
Okay, so we have a
We need to do one.
By Corey and a second by Mike, further discussion?
Sorry, everybody got fished 'cause of me.
All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Item D, discussion of possible decision, approval of two new server purchases.
Same thing with the budget item this year, two new servers.
We have a motion by Mike and a second by Mark. Further discussion? If not, all those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries.
For snow plowing, I recalled every contractor in Mozzany School District, nobody wanted to plow snow. I resorted to one of my favorite devices, Craigslist, found two snow plowers. Actually, one of the snow plow contractors does work in Wausau schools, his name's Josh Drager, very nice. Met with Gina Susky, our current flower.